Good evening. Thank you so much for coming in for our talk of the hall here on 4th and. My name is Admiral. I am your acting mayor, and you'll get the blessings to do this for you. It's gonna be an awkward night because I'm a lot wrong with two microphones. And if you choose to talk, I'm gonna put two microphones in your face. And there's a good chance that this one will just continue cutting in and out, and then I'll just scream over it at some point. So we'll just kind of tackle that as we go. We'll start off by meeting our consuls, and we'll go from there.
I'm Joe Quivin, Evans. Screw you up.
Tim Purkitch, I've been on the council for a couple of years now.
Brian Willis, I've been on the council for about 12 years. And I'm in my last term of service. I expect to be doing what I can to improve the city for the next three and a half years.
I'm John Rosy. Born and raised in West Evans, having my seventh year of being your counselor. I'll try to keep it as short as I can, but I'm feeling quite talkative tonight. Anyway, it's very nice. I come around between 50 years old people. That's a good turnout. We encourage you to not be shy. Questions, you want answers, we'll do our best to keep you as informed as possible. Now, not to make these people feel slighted. I think you should get to know these individuals too.
Jerry Ruson, Public Works Director. I've worked for the city for 23 years in different, all the different capacities. Welcome.
Jesse Lanning, Chief of Police. Coming up on 20 years.
Okay, so, excuse me, we have a slideshow. It's gonna kind of catch you up on some of the things that we've been doing, what we've been working on. After we get done with that slideshow, it may answer a bunch of questions that you already had, and you'll be like, that was great. But at the same time, if there are things that you want to ask thereafter, we'll go from there. At the end of every slide, if you have a question, feel free to raise your hand, and we'll just talk about it right then and there. And if I feel like I'm being put on the spot, I'm not comfortable, I usually hand it to Councilor Willis. So just go with the flow. All right, here we are. So first things first, at the very first town hall, one of the things that was brought up is our website. It was not ideal, and the best part of the sentence I just said was, "It was not." If you go to it now, and if you Google "Evil of Minnesota," it will come, you're options of choice. Pick our website, and you'll see our brand-new website. It is not completely done, so you might see pictures that may look more like Pennsylvania, or Florida, or Mexico. But they're slowly getting our pictures put in there, getting our information put in there. But they made huge slamslides of progress over the last month. Steph in our city office has been great, working with Mackenzie, getting all of this done, learning it, understanding it. So that we have people in-house that can really work on it as well. Forward on the next slide. If you go the old-school way, you'll see that under construction. Just have patience, because they're gonna try to get the way to connect to the new way. Also, there'll be mass notifications on there as well. It'll allow you to sign up if you want to get different pieces of information that the city is giving on a regular basis. You'll be able to do it by text, email, and phone, whatever works best in your world. It'll be a nice way to be able for us to connect to the community, and for you to want more information if you want it to get it. And those of you that are not interested, they don't have to sign up, and they don't have to see it. So it works out pretty well. Continue to bring in your photos. As we get to the point, we'll get those photos as they're linked onto the website, so you can feel like you're a part of our community website as well. As you can see, we have a bunch of people that are working on it for us. And a lot of the aerial stuff is done by Brian in the office, and he's doing a great job with that. Any questions about our website? Ooh, nail number one. Eric, you can hear me out just fine? Awesome. Okay, second thing, we had Big Truck Night last week. It was so much fun. If you came out and enjoyed it, thank you very much for coming. We had 18 vehicles out, between city vehicles, fire trucks, police vehicles, public works. And we also had vehicles from local communities, businesses, Minnesota Power, Lundgren's was out there, others, etc. So we had, we had a nice array. So with the 18 vehicles that the kids got to see, there was also four different food trucks, and the line was long. It was great to see. We didn't know how many to order. We didn't know if we should have four food trucks, if we should have 10 food trucks. So we are just kind of learning as we go. So if I knew what I knew today, I would have had five. So next year, maybe we'll get six, because more people are wanting to come out, because they found out how much fun we had. As you can see in the pictures, kids were climbing up on the equipment, families were walking around. That picture there, that's three generations of Torkala family out enjoying the day. And then at the top, you can kind of see a bunch of the different equipment that we had. It was a lot of fun. We were out there from 4 to 7, and there was just lots of communication, lots of talk. And people getting excited about different things that were going on. It really helped that this was 30 minutes after great news that we'll talk about shortly. Does anybody have any questions about Big Truck Night? Our goal, excuse me, our goal is to do it again. We want to make sure that we're making this part of our annual fun that we do in Evans. We don't know if we're gonna stick with the same date or timeline. We got really lucky this year, having 75-degree weather and everything else. But something that we'll work on and figure out what works best. Next up, this is the school campus site. I know it's on a lot of people's minds as they drive through town. Especially if you're driving across Joan Street. One thing that you definitely noticed is that the pickleball courts are done, the tennis court is done. People are enjoying them quite regularly. One thing that you may have noticed recently is Jerry did put a bunch of stakes in the ground. And you're probably wondering what those stakes are for. Those are for the possible future hockey rink. We're just trying to see how everything's gonna fit in there together. So whatever rumors you heard about a massive building or anything of the sorts, none of that's true. It's a, it is a hockey rink and a warming house is what we're looking at. You'll see those same stakes put over on the old junior high site where Chickagami Daycare Center's parking lot was. Same thing happening there. It's just us looking at the size of the rink and what it's gonna do to the, to the property if we were to put something of that size there. So just so you know. The rest of what we're talking about here. So if you look at this, I don't think I have to walk up there. We get it. The very bottom road there is Joan Street, and then working its way is north. So the Lincoln site is staying green space. The council decided, we don't really know exactly what we want to do yet, so we're leaving it as green space. Whether it becomes park and rec, or it becomes more housing, that will come along the way. The rest of that green space where the high school used to be and the parking lot is what we're actively working on to make. Possibly where the hockey rink would be, where the park will be, etc. That is all stuff that is a long ways off, unfortunately. Not for any reason other than funding. I, I know, and I don't know what I can do about it. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. So I will, hopefully Eric, he can tell the area if it's down there, but I'm not sure if that's it. We'll go with it. So where the parking lot used to be, and just to be able to be our playground. And the playground, like I said, is something in progress. Where the school is now, our goal is to call that the community center as we move forward. Old school, what used to be, 1994 building, all that stuff, right? It's gonna be our community center. In time, we really have a strong goal of making it a place that everybody can utilize for one reason or another. Whether it's to rent space, utilize the gym, do walking, etc. Our goal is to make it vocal communities, so we went with community center. There's no signs. We're not gonna spend money to tell you that. We're just throwing that out there. But we are working on getting the parking lot going, get this all. It will not be tarred going into the winter. It'll probably just be a hard-packed dirt, but the process will be started. We got a little bit late start on the project, so instead of them doing it, I'd say in a half-assed way. We'd rather have it do it right, than we'll just have dirt for the first winter. It's no big deal at the end of the day. And then inside the community center, we're gonna work on getting that cleaned up, get the gym ready to go, make rentable space on the first level. And the council's gonna work diligently to find out what's best for the second level. We don't have those answers yet. We're all ears, and people have got some opinions. It's fine. Send an email. Let me know what you're thinking. Council, let them know what you're thinking. We're just kind of taking it all in to find out what the request is for both the community, and then also for local businesses. If there's something that we can work with by putting it in there. And as you move up a little bit, you'll see that orange block there. That is an apartment complex. We are diligently working with a select builder who also owns another complex in town that a lot of people enjoy. To build something very similar to sorts there. I would love to give you a lot more information about that, but we are like in that 30% range of where it's headed. Getting the land plot, I don't know, we know the size of the building he wants to build, etc. It's kind of where that's at. And if you read the paper, I don't know, a couple months ago, and it said, you know, if government moves fast enough for you. It doesn't move fast enough for me. That I promise. I'm the most impatient person in this room. Jackie will attest. I don't, I don't, it doesn't bother me that I don't have patience. But I literally intend to get those patients working in government, because things can only move so fast, unfortunately. So myself and Councilor Purkitch, I've been meeting with some groups for better part of six to eight weeks now regularly about getting that apartment complex moving in the right direction. It is contingent, of course, on money, like anything else we're gonna talk about. There is quite the gap between what the person who builds this can make out of the property, and what it costs to actually build the property. So moving in the middle there, that's a little bit of green space, so it'll probably end up being a water feature of some sort. Because there's been a lot of, a lot of water run off on this property. We made it very clear, again, myself and Councilor Purkitch in these meetings, that we don't want it just to be a big hole full of water. We'd like to see it to be a centerpiece that people like to go sit around and be next to, and look at the water, I guess, so to speak. And if you're living inside the apartment, so you look outside, it'd be nice to not just see a water hole, but see a water feature. The purple area there is townhomes, and that is at the most infant stage of any of this. We've talked to a couple different people who have shown interest, one more so than the other. However, we can't move too much further on that one until the orange area gets complete. Not completely built, but at least the plotted areas, so we know how much land we have, the right to offer. And it goes right back to patients, and it's so hard to, to wait when you know somebody's interested, but not know what to be able to offer at that point. So exactly what kind of townhouses, we're not sure. Obviously multifamily, etc. But we're not sure if they're tall and skinny, or one level and flat. That is all for that designer and that builder to decide. We're just gonna kind of roll with it once we know how much land is there. Then as you move north on the paper-headed direction, you'll see the plotted-out homes. Which I know we've seen this a lot lately. If you look back a year and a year and a half, the council's kind of been encircled over what to do. Doing this will allow us to follow the same grid that the streets are currently doing. And the group that we're working with now, they kind of alluded that at this point, it'd be a good possibility for us to maximize the lawn space up there. And it might be a little bit easier for us to design these homes, so they would all be backyard to backyard. And then they would face the street on which you, you see it there. It is, it is just a very infant sketch, because all the middle is green space. We're thinking it'd be nice to have a nice sidewalk that connects the very north side of this all the way into the park. Allow people to be connected. But at the same time, it could change a little bit if we feel like there's a better option at this point. There was one other option too, about making it a cul-de-sac in the middle there. We can't get quite as many homes in there if we are to do that. However, we are gonna work with the realtor, and if they feel as though that is where the demand is, then we'll at least entertain that. But this kind of gives you a layout of what we've been working on, myself and Councilor Purkitch. One or two days a week are getting together, whether it's in person or on Zoom. And I feel like if you wait further than this to tell you that, but it goes right back to one step at a time. And unfortunately, this is what we have to offer. However, at the same point, the things that we're working on aren't speculative in the nature that we're just guessing. We're actually working with people that know what they're talking about, so we can move in this direction. Not that we weren't talking to people that didn't know, but it was a lot of speculative as the council. So as we move forward, you'll continue to see development, I think, up there. We're gonna run into a roadblock, obviously, with this winter. But myself and Councilor Purkitch aren't gonna stop with the meetings to move forward. And try to see what we can do, and try to get some land possibly plotted up there next spring. You know, as far as when things can be built, I would love to say we shovel the ground in the spring. But I don't have the checkbook that big, so I can't say that that will ever happen. But the first portion, the large portion, which is the apartment complex, then they're very optimistic about things, so it's a good feeling. Does anybody have any questions on this slide? Yes? Yep, it will be for everybody. The price range in which the rent will be will be comparable to what we saw also in town, that Lincoln apartments, etc. So we kind of feel like this opportunity is here for people that are like, well, they don't need our large homes anymore, and would rather just be in an apartment. I don't know if I'm quite there yet, but it just kind of opens the door for people that are ready to take that next step. One thing that Councilor Purkitch and myself have definitely pushed hard is we would like to see underground parking there. Underground parking does change the cost and everything else of this quite a bit. So we just keep looking for what we think is right, and what we think can help the community, what makes people happy. So any other questions on, on final? Anything, Joel, that you'd like to add? Yeah, yeah, okay, cool. That's a good thing. All right, the community center. Again, AKA, all things that can be called. Heating system is 98% complete. If you drive by, you still can see some trucks parked on the north side up there. They're just buttoning some things up. The final budget for improvements to, for the preparation for it are being worked on right now. Again, another reason for you being all the Councilor Purkitch all too often. But the meetings are going in the right direction. We're just narrowing down the scope of work, instead of saying, if there's an entire building, fix it overnight, use taxpayer money. That's not what we want to do. This whole council's trying to be, I hate to use the word frugal, because we're not being frugal. We're gonna do it right. However, not bite out more than we can chew upfront. We want to make sure that the building has a good roof on it. We want to make sure that it's secure and safe, so that when we start to utilize it, we don't have any concerns in that matter. Target opening date before the summer of 2026, which feels like a long ways off, but at the same time, it's right around the corner. I keep saying there were a bunch of youth that, they go to high school in this school. That may want to have their graduation parties inside the school. So we better get that thing ready to go, so that they can have those grad parties and anything else that comes forward. Sign up your child's grad party. There it is, if you're concerned. Next up, okay, do we have any questions on the, the building? So the question, we're gonna have a fitness center in the community, in the, in the building. There has not been a direct conversation yet, yes we will, or no we won't. One thing we want to definitely look at is what the builder of that apartment's doing. If that apartment complex is gonna have it for their people, it makes it a little less of a draw for us to want to put one in. If they don't, it's something more for us to talk about. One thing we know is that we do have a company in town that is on Main Street. We don't want to ever be a competition for them, where people are getting possibly something for free, we lose a business, or what have you. So there's a lot of thought processes being put into that. But it would be great for nothing less than solid walking in the wintertime, so that you're safe and things like that. We really are going to encourage that.
Not everyone feels comfortable going to, and like a, a sports club, you know, or somewhere, everybody's in there lifting weights. It's kind of nice if there would be some way to have equipment and like classes for, for the community. And we, we charged for it. Now the school over in Aurora does it, so we didn't do it in therapy anymore. But it's something that I think the community could use.
Thank you. Jackie, you wrote that down?
Thank you.
So one thing that we discussed a lot is, we really want the building to be for people in the community to utilize. Whether it's for us to get indoor pickleball nets, instead of, so it can be utilized that way. Fun for the kids to come in on the weekends, Sunday night open gyms, somebody to come in that wants to utilize and possibly teach yoga classes and stuff like that. The whole goal is for us to really open the door for what the community might see a need, and what we can actually supply. I appreciate those comments greatly, and I'm not gonna forget that Jackie's got those written down. And it's something we can definitely chat about as we continue down this line. Was there any other questions regarding that? Yes? There's no seniors in the city of Evans? Not one? I, I guess, when, when you say a senior center, what, what are you, what are your thought processes as far as what a senior center would show over, what a community center would?
Well, senior centers usually, you know, just for the seniors.
Right.
They have, there was space for cars, or...
I got you. Okay. Yep, I'm following, you know. So with the space that we have, I mean, there is no reason why, whether it's open all the time, or during set times, or what have you. It's definitely something, did you write that one down too? Thank you. That we can definitely chat about, because at the end of the day, the goal is the building to be used. This council, before I was here, decided to keep it. And no matter how anybody feels about it, we have it now. And the goal is, and the council's goal is, for us to utilize it the best we can as a community. So that people can come together and see people, and be seen, so to speak. And at the end of the day, if Tommy shows up every day to play pickleball, and he doesn't show up three days in a row, somebody can go check on Tommy, right? So it's just a great way to create, create a little bit more community. Anybody else have a question on this slide? Okay, perfect. The grocery store, nobody cares about the grocery store at this time. If, if you're on Facebook, and you know Joe Quivin, you know it got out about 18 seconds after it was going on. But the Evans Economic Development Authority was approved for funds from the ITRRB for a nonrecourse loan to update the building for a new grocery store. I know we've had some conversations in here where the ITRRB, we feel, has not assisted the state of Evans. Well, I think we can definitely take that statement off the table for a little bit. Myself, Councilor Quivin, Jackie, we were, we were meeting with the ITRRB fairly often for a while, until we kind of ended in the reins, and said, this is what we want, this is what we're looking for. Please come back to us with help, and they were great. The ITRRB really treated us well. We had a high hope of $5.5 billion to completely do the entire project. It was approved for $3.6 million, which allows the building to be completely done and ready to become a grocery store. Meaning, we would still need the funds for groceries, or things like, wow, coolers, etc. And at first, I was a little high-strung. I was a little upset about it. I wanted the whole thing, some greedy amount right now. But it, it does make sense. They want to make the building right first, and once the building is set, ready to go, work with the developer and the team that wants to create the grocery store, they let them finish building it out. At no time did they say no to the additional money if we need it. We just have to go back and talk to them about it again. So I'm extremely confident, if you are on Facebook, you know that Joe is extremely confident and happy. That this, this is truly happening. The grocery store is on its way. Timeline, they're looking at this spring-ish. It all comes along along, and takes for the contractors to do the work. If you have walked by the building recently, you see it's in rightness repair. But they have a great goal to put a grand refund on it, or a parking lot, redo the entire inside, pretty much gutted to make it new. So we don't feel like we're walking into the nostalgic IGA and wishing we all saw a house still. But we're gonna be excited about, we're gonna be excited about the new direction that we're going. And a fresh feeling building will be great there. The EDA is gonna lease this building to the grocery, and the city of Evans will feel good about this. Hopefully, like I said, in the spring-ish, but we'll know more as, as they proceed. Keep your eye out of the newspaper. Anytime the ITRRB talks more than $1 in Evans, my phone rings, which is okay. But it'll be in the paper, because one of those phone calls is always from about seven different...
I think it was a fly, but it might be one of my floaters.
Wow. That's why meetings take a little longer sometimes. But anyway. But the, we have a great feeling of the direction that it was headed. And I feel that in the end, this city is gonna be able to grow from there. Because a lot of the things that myself and Mr. Purkitch were talking about, when we talked to the other groups about apartments and townhomes and halls, is based off of what we saw from this report, you know, we're working on was a grocery store. And a lot of them wanted to hear that it was coming in order to kind of put that stamp on. So it was just a really good feeling to be able to let them all know that as well. Does anybody have any questions regarding, regarding the grocery store? Yes? Yeah, you know, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna go into this right a little bit, let Jackie just kind of hum through it a little bit.
So first of all, I'm gonna take a page out of Councilor Quivin's book, where he's told me this morning that he heard that there is a local grocery within a 10-mile radius that leases their building from a third party. So you've heard across the range over the years where the ITRRB would fund what they used to call spec buildings? Build the building, they will come. The EDAs would own those buildings and lease them up. And this is the same model, okay? Where the EAs are gonna own it. We currently own Lincoln Place. And the city has some other real estate, like the Versinius Dialysis at the House Services Park. Every of these set out. So it's, it's the best way to make this a reality. Because there is no human being in this world unless they want a huge write-off, like Joe and I talked about this morning, on their taxes could ever afford to make this work on their own, and put that many millions of dollars into a building. So the best way to do it is do it through the local government, and for us here in Evans to get our mighty tax dollars back into our community, so we can serve all of you. Can I answer your question?
I answered it, yeah? Could've hit you a little bit more for that one. Was there any other questions regarding our grocery store? I heard something said about... It's a good thing. I agree. It's a good thing, I agree, it's a great thing. Yes?
Will there be a press release on the city's website when this, uh, deal is signed?
Which exact deal? The deal regarding the grocer that's gonna lease? If it's not on the website, I'm sure we have a front page of the paper, they're calling daily, I don't know who it is and when it's gonna be, so there's no question in mind, you're gonna see it only. But there's nothing wrong with the website, that is why it's there, so we can get announcements up on that, let people know, absolutely.
Which paper? You mean saying on the front page or on the paper? Which paper?
The SMI Tribune? That is typically the region of me and you, getting to do it very often. I... I, I don't know what to tell you.
It ain't free.
It, yeah. More than fair, I love that answer. Stay in Devlin, I love it, I love it. Yeah, I, if you read on Joe's page too and everywhere else, even I think Bobby's page with the city of Devlin's Facebook page, he has general. I, I kind of, I, I'm really talking to the council on the first, um, all that, I, I wasn't really in favor of it. And every conversation with them has been squashed. For us to move forward with the grocery store, we needed to even let them know that we weren't looking to bring in a competition for them because we already know it's gonna take... You know, if we're only utilizing it for pickup, whatever, an onion quick or bananas for bread, it's not gonna work. But as a community, and I know we're going to do that, be in there and shopping and be a part of it is what's really gonna hold on to them, so. No, we're not looking to bring in any competition for them at all as far as a dollar general, so. You can, you can squash that, if you see it on Facebook, you can let them know I went to the town hall and Brian Lould said it's not happening. Any other questions there? Thank you. I kept being told the whole time, you have to have patience, such a terrible word.
How about some tolerance?
Tolerance? Tolerance? Uh-huh. So, this next slide is, is kind of new to all of us, it was just brought to us a week ago. And what this is, is the Alice location and if anybody goes back into the history of Devlin, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but there was the Alice pit. Back on the backside where OSI currently is, and that is why we call this area the location, um, the Alice location. So over here would be like Highway 53 and over here is OSI and the city garage. So this map kind of makes sense to you now as you look at it? Right at the crossroad top would be Fail Road as it leaves, leaves town to go to West Devlin. What we're looking at doing behind the homes that are on Fail Road and through the Alice location is create buildable space for commercial properties that we have, uh, both in Devlin currently and places that may want to come to Devlin, that put up their commercial location. So we're currently working with two locals that have interest in possibly, meaning that there was possibly, I was gonna do that, but they're, they are the reason why the building is looked the way they are, so it's a little bit more than I think they might be interested. So that's where it's at. But we'll create a road that comes in there so that they're able to access the, the new buildings, the new businesses and then be able to go out on the backside OSI so they can make their way out of town. Like I said, this is really, really, really a new concept that we just dove into, not the Alice location development. That has been on since 1997. I just went to a seminar here the other day, I really don't remember all this, I didn't. But 1997, they started working on all this and finally, here we are in 2025, or it's 2026, being able to put together a design and, um, Mr. Bob Streeter's worked extremely hard on this one and put this together so we can start to move forward in the right direction. So these locations, it's primarily three locations, two of which are businesses, like I said, that we're working with. The third one, um, is one that is open property that we are either gonna utilize for ourselves in the city of Devlin or if we could find another business that wants to come in and create a tax base that would help all of us in this room as we live here and we would like our tax to come down. But this building, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, this development area would just help us be able to use some space in town that has been idle for a really long time. And it will then also allow businesses in town to build the type of business that would work best for them. Now I'm gonna say any questions, we're firing a lot, but fire right, any questions? What's that? Oh, I, I can, sure, can I do that for you? Can I do that for you? How about you talk, what did someone else want to say?
I was just gonna mention that, uh, you know, this, this project kind of lingering for a long time because that area was contaminated by, you know, previous owners. Contaminated in the sense that soils need to be abated. So what is, that's part of ours or why it's been taking so long to put this all together because in the end, we need to get the merchants with us, the business merchants with us, to gain access to some very important grant, grant funds to abate that soil problem. So all of that takes a tremendous amount of time and as you probably can expect, it would take a tremendous amount of money to abate that problem down there. That's where this grant opportunity is gonna help the city all lighten the burden on the dancers and all.
Here's the fun part, we have a new road, we need to gotta name it. So I'm gonna advocate, and this is problems all of these guys do because I like to sidewalk them. We, we should have a naming competition when it comes closer, like it did for South Ridge and all of that stuff, to engage the public. So what do you think that road might be called and someone's gonna win and maybe they'll get tickets to a Twins game or something. But, uh, it'll be fun, it's something to look forward to. I like the old road, it's a very good entry. And that's crazy, he's also buying the tickets for this and he's going to himself for the naming of it. Perfect. I like that, don't worry about it. That's okay.
So, there's houses.
Cedar, cedar, cedar. So the homes on this are quite on the north side of this and there's gonna be a line that's gonna help divide it, whether it's a tree line or what have you. Our goal is not for any of this to be in your backyard and as you see right here, where they look, they look like trees and then how they do, those, all of the businesses, for the most part, are gonna be on the other side of that road. The properties, uh, that are on Fail Road, near Simon's and his home, et cetera, this is, their backyard is gonna come up to that tree line. The little area in the back here that you see kind of jetting towards that, it's not coming into anybody's property, but that's another small little area that we have. Uh, as we move forward, and again, this is like the most basic infancy step, picture that there can be. Our goal is not to intrude on those homes that those people have. Our goal is not to upset people that live in our town with something of the sorts. And, and our goal also, Eric, I'm sorry, I don't wanna make a noise with this other one, but, is to run a four-wheeler trail right through there too, so we can try to keep four-wheelers in the future off of Fail Road as they try to get out towards West Devlin. As they come off of Superior Street, I guess which it is, which goes behind IGA and Walparks, et cetera. You know, pop out and then those four-wheelers keep going behind OSI and try to keep them off the main, main county road as well.
And this, this whole thing is going to be kind of true. So I just hope that there are some business community that we live on that have very, very, very comfortable...
Absolutely.
Fail Road, the whole, very, very loud, called the J-3, because it's always coming in, huh, huh? Can I avoid the noise coming in behind us? That, that wouldn't make us happy.
I'm hoping that there's something that can be done that, that we don't get more noise.
And, and it, it is a very fair statement for anybody that lives there or anybody that cares about people that live there, which we do. It was one of the first things that was mentioned when this was popped up is how do we create it? And I get it that putting a bunch of circles there doesn't really show what our goal is, but it's just to kind of add an idea of what the overall goal is to try to separate the two locations from everybody and... Absolutely, absolutely. And as things develop through there, we know that there's gonna be other things that change in this too. This is the very first rendering that was created once we were able to work with a few different companies showing interest, knowing what size of land that they needed. So, as, as basic as it is, it really gave us a good idea of the direction we're trying to head so we can start working with those businesses to make sure that they, that they're ready to start putting forth their time and energy to, to build within Devlin.
I'm just having a little trouble, um, picturing where this is gonna be. I see that there's a name on that street there that's north of Perkins and White, um, but I can't remember what it is. What is that and then where is the east end of this new road going to connect to?
Sure, so... I know you guys are looking at this and you don't really know where it's at. Everybody knows where my garage is down there, everybody knows where Clark Blackwood's place is, everybody knows where the old Monich, uh, John Ham, where John Krakus' hamster store is. You know where that is? Okay, I, my building would be down in here. That building coming in there is where the Clark Blackwood building is right now. And this one is on the, it's the old train depot where John Krakus is. So now that's give you a better picture. And this right here is just nothing right now, we use it for snow dump. So there's a few businesses that are really showing a lot of interest in it and that's why this is on. And of course, right there in my garage is, is the worst, it's deep, it's ugly and it's all contamination. What the people, they probably realize this, is years ago, all Fail Road was all gas stations. Okay, so in the olden days, they spill it on the ground, nobody cleaning up. So it all runs down this way, it all ran down there. So that's where most of it came from, there's oil companies back there, they spilled a lot of oil. So this is just a way for us to try to clean it up and the businesses we've talked to, we're already there anyway, so they would just relocate. That's where we're working on that. So as I stand here now for Eric and the camera, this is the highway that goes to West Devlin. Okay, let's kind of bring you in a little bit. This is the city garage, recycling center, et cetera, this is OSI. This, this Fail Road. And right here is where Clark's place is currently, and we're looking to have come in right where his building is currently to enter it. This would be Main Street heading up that way. Does that help a little bit, pointing at it and saying it? And people that were mentioning before, well, all of their homes are here for the most part facing Fail Road. So we're trying our best to keep it this direction. Was there any other questions regarding this one, this slide? Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you. So next up, this is, uh, our Jack Pine Business Park that we have been working on well before my time here. Uh, this is heavily moved by the additional road that the county will be putting in that connects Station 44, Highway 37, or we wanna look at it, towards the school's property. So it is going to, it's going to be a brand new road that is built by the county to connect you from 37 to, uh, another, another roundabout, and that's what we all wanna talk about tonight, right? Another roundabout that they wanna put in on Wolverine Drive Parkway or something like that, yeah. So this road will come back by Service Master and start making its way up. The plan on this was truthfully to be, certainly to be built, was it next year? However, as they were site planning it, some things happened and it caused, I don't know why we're losing more. Some site planning caused it to have to move. And because of those movements, it postponed everything by a year at the, at the least. And we're just learning how to rewrite this road to there. So the red box areas that you see, as we move to the right, the more blown up version of those are there. The, the, the goal there is to see those pieces of property developed off of that road. So again, hard to see because none of this exists, it's out in the woods right now. But they have gone out, have done their surveys to find the wetland, find where the hard rock is, et cetera, to find out what type of properties we can go out there and build and how big those areas are. You see the ownership of different properties, the college has some, the city has some, the DMT has a lot. But these are all areas that we are working with to create possibilities for new businesses to come into Devlin and operate. We will probably know a lot more on this in the next month or two as they are hoping to have tied together where the road can actually go now. Excited for that meeting, I think it's the end of October. But as soon as they narrow down exactly where the road is gonna go, then we can kind of firm up exactly what locations we wanna use. But Bob Streeter again has been working with the team to find these locations available. And those are more or less paths, those are spaces that a business could purchase and develop. We're working on natural gassing on their power, et cetera, so that it's pretty much site ready for companies when they wanna commit. We wanna really make it, um, something that, a new business or a business that has been on for a while that wants to expand to get excited about. So again, this is Highway 37 to the, the second roundabout that will exist at one time, so. Any questions on this, this one at all? Yes? So the area from the current and brand new and fading roundabout that goes up to the school, oh, it's Wolverine Drive, Green Parkway. Do you know what it is, Jackie?
It's Wolverine Way.
Wolverine Way, it is Wolverine Way. There's no doubt, there's no doubt. Nope, but you'll get absolutely no argument from me and when we get to the end of this slide, I'm gonna throw some things out there, just kind of get some feedback so the council knows how to move forward. We're not too far off from that. Next one? The Newton Park is just about finished. Our goal is that you can lure there with your dog, October... Our goal is that you can go in there with your dog, October 11th, and feel confident that it is, it is complete. So the, the land shaping is complete, the fencing's been installed, they put the gates up. And if you're wondering where I'm talking about, I'm talking about behind our new grocery store, the IG. It's where the old tennis courts were. Um, there is two sides, and if you're looking at it from, I'm just going to say grocery store, on the left-hand side, it's more designed for people with smaller dogs, not the right-hand side of people with larger dogs that are looking to play in what happened with the dog park. The fire hydrants you see are not active fire hydrants, those are decorations. Um, they're, they're going to get prettied up and cleaned up and have some fun with them, but there's been a lot more questions about the fire, about the actual dog park itself. Jerry just had an extra million dollars later on, so he's like, oh, that's, that's, that's never happened. Um, there has been, um, a donation by a new 501(c)(3) that has been designed and built inside what's called Energizing Eglith. Uh, Energizing Eglith raised money for a structure we put up. It's a metal roofed building with six posts. It's a place to put the bench and for the person to sit to get out of the, or get out of the sun or whatever it might be. And we're excited for Energizing Eglith to work with 3D concrete to get the, the post holes dug, get the post up and get the structure up so then some park benches can get in there and, and people can enjoy it that way as well. Um, Energizing Eglith, this is kind of their first project to get their, their word out. And you're going to see, I believe, a lot more from Energizing Eglith where they're kind of similar to like a Reviver G. Because it's Eglith. But the, the goal of this 501(c)(3) is to help the community get the things that they need. The city of Eglith can't always apply for grants. They need to be applied for by a nonprofit. So a group of individuals have opened this, they are going to have some of their first meetings coming up. And once they open up their meetings to the community to be a part of them, then they will work with the website and online and everything else to get the word out. But it's coming along well, I'm excited for that group, but this is the very first thing that they worked on. So they just wanted to kind of get the word out that Energizing Eglith is, is real and hopefully we'll see a lot of that in the very near future. But Jerry assured me he'll stay out on the 10th until it's done. We'll be ready on the 11th. Oh, he didn't say that. No, no. No, I mean for the 11th. Unfortunately, um, you'll see some signage going up about cameras and everything else because there's already things happening. So we just want to let people know that we're keeping an eye on, on our product, a dog park that we're super excited about. The dog park on the other side of town, as long as you see a fence there, feel free. At some point the next year or so, that fencing is going to be taken down, stored for another project in the future. But if you like still going over to that dog park, by all means, we're not doing anything with it at all until there be no fence there in some dog park anymore. So that's a question to you. Okay, next one? Any, I'm sorry, question on the park?
I was wondering if you could promote the old dog park for someone? You know that, does anybody, is anyone else a dog park? It's like 144 feet by 190 feet by, and it's got over 100 red pine trees. I mean, have you heard of forest bathing? I mean, when you walk in there, it affects your immune system, it lowers blood pressure, it, it has all kinds of things. The pine smell itself is a protector for the trees itself to keep it from, um, microbes and things. But we, it helps our, um, NK cells, they're killers for diseases. And it helps your immune system for 30 days. I mean, we could be putting this on, on our website, something about Eglith, people are coming from Virginia over here. It is so beautiful. I've got pictures of it. I just found out about this new dog park. And thank God the old one's going to be there for a while because it is amazing. People are coming from everywhere and it's beautiful. And those dogs are chasing squirrels, like running like crazy. I'm trying and trying to enjoy running like that. Sheltered, it is so beautiful. Um, I just think maybe we could do something else for the time. If you pull up those fences, what's going to happen to those fences? These are expensive, 144 feet, 190, 144, you know, I don't know what the area is exactly, but it's such a place for our community to advertise what we love here. That's amazing.
So I'd like to say, it's quite a, it feels like a company, we have built some, this is me. And there's all this.
Two sides to it.
And I'm not opposed to anybody's side of it. Um, I do love when you say, I know, we know, encouraging us to utilize it. We don't have an idea of what we're going to do with that property as of yet. And when the fencing comes down, it's just all.
Saving the fencing for another project. It's not going to just be tossed, it's not going to be money not well spent. Uh, we'll use it for another project somewhere. But the idea of what we're going to do with that project yet, uh, that property has not even been remotely discussed. Um, some ideas that have all surrounded, nothing that's been pushed in further than that.
Eglith Forest, Eglith Pine Forest, slayer enjoyment. I mean, it's better than anything in the city. It's, you know, more nature.
Yeah, I've actually walked around it in the winter. I've used it.
Yep, this, this space, the space is there. Space is there for now. And when ideas start coming over to the useful, if anything, then obviously that, that will come in front of everybody and it will be all on board to hear it out.
Was there anything else?
On this slide?
No.
Okay. Uh, the wilderness are coming back to Eglith. We're going to have them for their first home game on October 10th, second one on October 11th. Uh, the city is excited to have them back. A great group of young men that are already playing a part in some of our community things that they're doing, helping out some citizens and what have you. Their coach is extremely motivated to be a part of the community. I just had a conversation with the coach last week and it was on the CFT, his voice for what they could do, not just for the city, but also for the people. Uh, the city of Eglith is working on improvements. I believe the word has gotten out a few times regarding, uh, the dehumidifier that is needed inside that building. That dehumidifier is quoted at $1.3 million. Um, I did check Council Rose's truck cushion in there. Um, snickerdoodle, but that was a little bit, but no. Um, it is one of those projects that we have a quite complete $350,000 for, so we're still looking at what we need to do to put together the rest of this. And that is about where things are at right now because there's a lot of around the world might be a good idea. The word came home. But it's just, it's a project that we need to take a look at if we want to keep the wilderness on a more regular basis. Because if you didn't know, they actually played over in Virginia last weekend because their ice was ready to go. And unfortunately, we've got this amazing summer July in the end of September and it wreaks havoc on the ice inside that building. So, um, there's a lot of, um, updates that are under the building the last couple of years. Work in the outside and what have you. Are moving forward and taking care of that building. It's.
Third operating one in the country.
So something that the city is taking pride in and making sure that people are aware. Any questions regarding the wilderness?
Um, is this, is this what it's been?
Um, they're playing one game there. There is a week of practice and one game. Yeah, this is, so. So I constantly tell everybody that yes, right, we support it and we want to be a part of it and support our boys and girls that are playing. But the wilderness, the wilderness are the hockey team right now in Eglith. They're playing inside our Hippodrome every other weekend. They're part of the community, they're here. I just really encourage people to, to be a part of it and see, see what it can be for a night.
Can we utilize this building for other means in off-season, the half because it is beautiful building and I think we do that building and that building, we lost Eglith.
There, there's no doubt. There's no doubt. Well, then, so we can use it for more in the summertime, etc. Jerry, do they use it for baseball anymore?
Not anymore, but the older, the older, they have a few matches for the older people. Yeah, they brought, they brought us in the most.
If you didn't touch that, the older eating is in the summer practicing, eating weekends. Uh, but it doesn't stop us for people via, sending emails saying, like this, the worst we could say. That's the parent ask, that's the idea. And we try to roll with it. This council has been great to work with because they're all listening. Listening is the business and that's all that I ask for is making sure that we remember that this is all part of the community and the 501(c)(3) operated. That's the beginning that you guys engendered. So any other questions regarding?
Would there be more of an opportunity to open that up to the public to skate more often? I know there's a mom and tot skate during the middle of the day that they're really great about letting everyone come to, but I don't know how many people actually know about that. I know it's a pretty, it's hard to find anyway.
Jerry, what do you know about, uh, opportunities for open skating?
Parents tots are three days a week usually. Parent tot skating is, we just call it that, but anybody can go down there. We just don't want anybody using cups and sticks, so we call it parent tots. And, uh, we have it three days a week because we're doing a lot of work on the ice on Mondays after the weekend. So we can't have it then. Friday is, uh, a little tougher to have it in the Fridays too. So the school lot wants to come down on Fridays and skate with their elementary kids a lot. So, um, otherwise the wilderness are using the arena in the morning, so. But yeah, parents tots, and it's on the schedule, it's on every schedule, Hippodrome's schedule. We put it up on our, face, our website, so you should be able to find the times on there.
Anything else you have in the head?
Anybody want to poo sleeves for Abby Sneakle? Sleeves, we still like you.
So we get to the end of, end of the slides and, um.
If there's topics that.
Let's go.
If this is frustrating, you can just imagine what it's going to be.
Um, topics that people have questions on, uh, things that are on your mind, etc. We'll, I'll go around there. Should do the point that Ms. Tandy had started to talk about, and I'll catch Mr. Kelson again. But the, the hockey hall of fame in the state of Eglith, we have a great core of people that are fighting hard from our community that could hear of my fame. With being said, I, I do feel it's time that this community bought into the idea. You go to Gobertstown and everything there's got a baseball bat or a baseball or a baseball jersey or a baseball, whatever it might be. And I'm not saying that we have to buy into that level, but to the point, it's time maybe that we start talking about changing park names to Blue Line on North Side or Red Line on South Side, Center Ice Park, things like that, just basic things as we start to move forward and buying in so that maybe we don't have anybody knocking on our door in, in five years saying that it has a better look than somewhere else. I don't have all those answers. It's, it's just really, you know, I said it last time, it's just really a basketball guy thinking outside the box, but I really feel like if our community starts showing in more ways than just we have the Hockey Hall of Fame or we have a big stick or we have the Hippodrome, but we as a community are buying into the overall idea, it makes it a lot harder for other areas perhaps to stick their nose into what we're doing and instead come up here and enjoy it and visit us and be a part of what we're doing. So I would love to see when we build our parks and we update things to utilize hockey figurines and things like that, to create memorials for great things that have happened through Eglith hockey and underage hockey through the years. So I talked about it, but I didn't want to do a whole lot about it until I knew for sure. And Mr. Purpose said he's just going to start thumping people on the head if it doesn't stay. So we will, we'll aim that it's going to be here. We just start buying into it as a, as a community and saying, this is what we want. So from there, I'll come to Mr. Kelson and he will go.
Well, all considered in light of all these many exciting things that are happening and really important things are happening, this may seem relatively insignificant, but for a few of us, it's not quite so insignificant. In the, um, school campus plant, in the water feature area, there is a flowering crab tree. Uh, some of us participated in planting that in 2015 in honor of Gordie Rodby, who was our swimming coach for the boys team for 47 years. I'm glad it survived all the demolitions, but I'm worried that in time, no one will know why that tree is there and somebody's just going to cut it down and not even think twice about it. Is there any chance we could put up like a little bell plaque and sort of protect that, that tree as part of our, our heritage? Again, in light of everything, that's a small thing, but maybe we could put that as one mix.
It's thick like that that remind all of us that we might forget that one time almost right away, and I haven't heard anybody say it since, but it's great to have the reminder put out there because it's a part of many generations. You wrote that down, right, Jackie? Wonderful. Big Stick Meets, Eneker. So, um, if you haven't tried the name is Nia Bent, oh, so good, so good. I used to be 210 pounds now, but it is so good. Eneker and his family purchased the old Schwan's building. You see them dazzling it up, painting it, baking it, right? He has the goal of early spring of being open for, uh, the public to come in and shop and it'd be a meat market. I think everybody appears trying something.
The bacon is delicious. Yes, it's very good.
I had, I, I had some Polish and I was like, brots, brots, what are you going to call? No, they're not just brots, they're amazing. So I'm super excited, Brian's excited. Instead of rushing in any of this, he just wanted to do it the right way and take the time and put it together so that, you know, we're not coming in the shop and, you know, stepping over saws and stuff like that. So he's been trying to get the outside button up so that when the winter comes, he can tackle the inside and be ready for us in the spring. I know he's already ahead of schedule, so I don't want him chasing, they'll fall behind schedule when that happens. But again, it's going with the Schwan.
I'm just curious if there's any interest or plans for the old Holiday Inn property with the street and utilities out there, it seems like a great opportunity.
If you can catch, she's. Finds any better. The old Holiday Inn building, um, he has this, he owns that property. And with the ownership of that property, we are working with and have worked with our consultant on trying to find a business to go there. We, the council has decided to bring on an economic development person. Um, we hope to have that person working for us, you know, the 2026 year at the latest. Would have that location being a prime, what we need to put there. We weren't really for commercialism, we weren't looking for, um, we weren't looking for big concrete building. We were hoping for something that was touristic, uh, whether it. We were hoping for something that was touristic, whether it be another hotel or something that was gonna draw people in to really liven up what we have going on there with the curling club and the Hockey Hall of Fame. You know, and distribution and things like that wasn't really what we wanted us to be there. We have other locations where we can put them, that Jackmine district. But it is, it is something that we are, we're looking into and excited for the economic development person with their contacts to really work with people to see who'd be interested. Absolutely.
Is there anybody replacing Jackie?
No. We, we actually, before we came here, we just finished the vote for the offer for Jackie's replacement. Jackie will be hired in the middle of December. And this individual looks like they'll be coming in the middle of November. They've got 30 plus years of experience in all types of markets. We're excited with all the items we have in the fire here in Evolith to have somebody that's got a background in kind of all of them. The goal when we did this is to find the right person for the city of Evolith that to keep guiding us through what we're doing. And we, we feel pretty confident with the person and their background and the connections that they've created. So all that was just done an hour and a half ago and I believe that we'll see, we'll see him mid, mid-November. Yes. So the next question was the levy, Brian Willis. Go.
You gotta push me because I can't hear a thing.
Oh, and I'll write up some stuff. Okay, so the levy, it's a great question. We forgot to put the slide up on accident. We just voted after hearing that the county was at 12.5%, that the school was looking at 23% that our goal was to come in at not double digits, so we came in at a preliminary number of 9%. And we are going to sit down and try to do something that's never been done before in Joe Koyvenen's time or as he said ever, and try to even come down off that 9% and really dig through the numbers. With some communities coming in at 20%, 14 and 12, we just knew we didn't want to be that high. We knew we wanted to work within our means to keep people happy here within the city of Evolith. But at the same time, still meet the standards and the requirements that we need to by paying the medical benefits of people that work for us and things like that. So 9% is where we're starting and my goal, and I told Joe, is the least bring it down because it's never happened. So at the very least, we'll, I'm thinking 8.9 at the least.
That's dumb.
It's, it's, it's something that's never happened and Joe kept telling me and telling me and telling me. And one thing I've done is act like I don't know more than I know because people like Joe have been up here for 20 years doing this and they understand what's happened every year that this has come upon us. So I've been, I've been novice and I've been educated on the topic and I appreciate all four of these gentlemen for kind of keeping me in the loop of what truly happens. Is there any other questions or anything else that we can try to chat with you about, educate you on? Downtown? The question was, is there anything going on downtown? Jackie, hit me with a poll on the surveys.
So there was a survey done, they've been returned. The whole goal is to make the downtown more retail ready. Do some market research to determine where there may be gaps or what kind of goods and services folks not only in Evolith, but the closer around community are purchasing and find out then how to target those businesses that can deliver that service. And by the time I exit stage right on December 16th, the council will have their final report and then my replacement will take over on how we implement some plan to further enhance the downtown.
So the survey was sent to the businesses on Main Street and.
And the property owners.
And the property owners of those buildings, thank you. And we just got them back less than a week ago, week or a wish. So we haven't really had a chance, I can't wait to dive through and read when people had to stay on them. But that's the very first step for what she was just talking to us about. So there is a goal in the mix. Like I was talking earlier with the new city administrator of having all these items in the fire. I really wanted somebody that would know how to continue these items, keep them hot so we can move forward and add a little extra charge to the community development person. Is there any other questions that we can try and answer?
It'd be really nice if we could have the Hockey Hall of Fame and keep them here. Incorporating more of the hockey theme downtown. We don't have to tie the walk along to the end of the time. And I see a lot of these families taking pictures over the big stick and then they're looking at the barrels. But it'd be nice to get them to walk up and down the street if there was stuff that could be incorporated to bring that hockey theme more to downtown. I don't know if it could be some of the banners that are, you know, that they put up in like during graduations or something like that that could bring up the downtowns.
Yes, talking to the wilderness, the wilderness, they want to get some of their banners in those exact spots where the graduating kids will be. Not that that is obviously a year old thing, it could be their season thing. One thing that I had a grand idea on a long time ago, but again, it comes on Mondays. I thought it would be just amazing to have a memorial walk, big stick down our main street to the Hippodrome. So people would wanna stop and look at monuments, possibly plaques, read about hockey history and the history of Evolith. And in the process of doing so, they stop here, they stop there, they get excited about this, whatever it might be. Again, it goes right back into, I want us to buy in that we're hockey town. I really like us to get there. And my plan that I just had said is such a crazy plan because of the amount of money that would have to come with it. But it's just, if you're in my head at 2:00 in the morning, that's what I'm thinking of. And then if you see me at 3:00 walking down, I'm just pacing, you don't wanna call me statues. You need to keep a five-year-old intrigued. I just have a little point.
I think my voice is a little bit. Safety wise, we always paint those walking dogs with red. I noticed that paint is very slippery when it gets wet. I personally slipped twice on that paint. I think we either should find a different type of paint or just in one of these black.
Something, Jerry, that at least we can be looked at as far as the product itself.
Yeah, it's, it's just an oil-based paint.
It is an oil-based.
It is oil-based, yeah. So I'm not sure if you could use that whole, but.
It's a painter's bricks.
What's that?
It's a painter's bricks.
It's not bricks, it's just that we paint the crosswalks, they'll look like bricks. It was stamped that way, county stamped it that way when we redid the road. But.
Yeah, we, we date them every year and it's very popular when we date them. If we don't, we, I get a lot of phone calls wondering why we didn't. But I'm not sure what we could put on there to make it a little more. I understand what you're saying, it could be slippery.
Honestly, I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't, yeah, but it's something to think about.
Put some sand on the paint?
Possibly mix some sand in there, yeah.
Okay, yes. I love it. Jerry, can I talk to a, because I know exactly where the fuck. It gets something in there that would be a little bit higher so we do get the strong rings that would just divert that rock from going onto the pathway and just kind of probably build up behind ties or something like that. But it was a discussion that we had, trying to figure out an answer, but absolutely it is on our radar. Because yeah, the path is beautiful and you get to that corner right there and it's a, it's forward drive mode for sure. Is there anything else that was on anybody's mind? Well, I thank everybody for coming out and seeing us tonight. The last thing I wanted to mention to you is when you're walking out, you're gonna see three park benches on the back. Dan is holding them down for us right now. But the goal of those is to help create the sense of Evolith back here again. And you'll see those benches are iron, one is gold and one is marining gold. We haven't decided exactly how yet we wanna piece it all out there, whether one is worth X amount of money and the more you pay up for your donation. But the Evolith Masons went out and bought the first three for donations to see the different ideas that exist. Whether you want it to be your graduating class, your family donating one to a family member, that helps. A business wanting to do it. Our goal is to try to get these around town so we remind ourselves of our, of our heritage, the rooting gold, golden bears. And this is just the very first step of doing it. So check them out, these were custom made for the city of Evolith, paid for by the Evolith Masons just so that everybody can get a feeling of what's going on. And I'm really excited about it as we build our parks and the dog park and we work on revitalizing different areas. It's gonna be fun to see our park benches out there and people being able to enjoy our areas. So with that, anything up here, gentlemen? Right down the line.
I usually speak my piece, I don't have much of a filter and I try not to swear.
Okay.
You heard Mr. Koyvenen, the mayor, Mr. Purpitz, the mayor. Me and Mr. Willis do these two. Just in case you're wondering.
Oh, well, I gotta make sure you.
Election season's coming.
That was me.
Okay.
That was me.
But no, no, we have different projects that we work on, the Aris Overlook, the Cemetery, HRA, the DEA, we're both on.
So just go through that we're.
Not to see.
Going up, the Colubaryum?
No, the Colubaryum, at, at the Cemetery. I have long reach plazas, he doesn't have any idea about.
For the cemetery.
At one time, Evolith was the only place that was really growing, if you know. But we, there are things that we do also. I like breaking these myself, they have a great time with me. But just, I, I don't know, I just had to say it because I didn't hear my name mentioned, that bothers me.
That, I will take 100% leave on that. There are a lot of things that Mr. Olsy and I are working on. It's usually when I get my most laughs in a day because he knows how to bring down my patience of getting excited to this day, it's cool.
I have something to say about the cemetery.
Yes, let's hear it.
Very well taken, Carol, it looks beautiful.
Yes.
And I appreciate it.
And that's, that's all on Jerry and his crew. They do a wonderful job, however, be advised, I'm gonna tell them. But I do think that there's need for improvement to roads down there. Are in need of rebuilding and redoing. We have to step into the new area with water line and a road down there. And also the centerpiece are angels and crucifix. The trees, although is what is quite dead and stuff. I think we can do, make that the centerpiece, dress that up nice, get it organized without, I'm digging it up. But I do have some plans for the cemetery, we haven't discussed with too many people yet.
Do you do anything? Again, I just wanna thank John for everything that he has done. Because he has been great, he is, he is truly that. I did not say a lot of things regarding Mr. Listens. He, he has been behind the scenes on a lot of the things, the city administrator, the hiring process, a bunch of things. And usually when you see paper and literature, that's everything. Words? Words. But I'm here. There you are, sir.
Thank you very much, man. I wasn't feeling like old stranger, I'd rather fly under the radar than. I wanna thank everybody for taking the time to come listen to us tonight, taking an interest in the city of Evolith. I can speak for all of us, we say we work pretty hard to try to, to make good things happen for the city. You know, we're faced, just like you're faced, with expenses that are getting out of control and we have to make, make the best out of what we have available to us. And I can ask to say from all the meetings I've attended with each and every one of the councilors and the mayor that, you know, we wanna improve the city and we would ask for the city's patience with us in the fact that the government wheels turn slowly sometimes. Primarily, the bottom line is always financially relieved. We, you know, we have to find sources for funding and we have to try to keep the costs to our residents down as best we can. So your patience is imperative, your input is imperative and again, thank you for coming this evening.
I also want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. It's always nice to have people interested in what we're trying to do and. And I've been working with Carly for a little bit here on the parks and trying to get everything going in that direction. There are a couple other things that I'd like to get skated. We have a problem out at Evolith Virginia Airport. We're in need of a manager, someone that's gonna work 20 hours a week generally. Someone that's gonna take an interest in going out there and making sure that airport runways are clear, help with snow removal, that type of thing. But also letting the FAA know that our airport is ready for, for business at any time. Trying to get, even the last six months, we've been trying to interview maybe 15 people. They're all, you hear the goal and then all of a sudden they say, no, they don't want the job. I understand that it's not a lot of money, a lot of hours, but it is, you know. It is needed out there, so it is needed out there. So if you know of anybody, you don't have to have a rocket scientist. You just have to know how to run a computer and let that be, knowing that our airport is open. We've lost a lot of business in the last couple of years and even though we have a lot of hangars available and people are utilizing them, it's hard to keep that airport going, which could be a lifeline for some business. I know we had a, a problem that, like you hear the. Hospital helicopters went over Evolith quite a bit. There was an incident just early part of May. Flew from Duluth to International Falls and they needed fuel. They had to have a certain amount of fuel in their aircraft when they leave. One airport go to, go back to Duluth, the stop was in Evolith and there was nobody there. There was a problem with the fueling machine and there was nobody there to take care of it. They called someone that had been out there before, he came out there and fixed it, they got on their way. But you know, that's a nice city there. We, we really appreciate it if you can, if you know of anybody, contact the airport authority and tell them about, his name is Steve Lear, is, is the coordinator out there. Get ahold of him to the city of Evolith area as a office he maintains once in a while out there. But right now, the only person we have out there is the guy that works at Mintac. And he's worked the 12-hour shifts out there and then he comes over here on his days off and he's doing the snowplowing and the grass cleaning and everything like that. So if you know of anybody that can help out, we really would appreciate it. The grocery store is a great thing coming into our community, we want it a long time. I just hope that when it does show up, that the citizens of Evolith really. Take, participate, use that, use that grocery store. We have a lot of plans. Like I was, when Willis said it takes money, we're not gonna try to take it from you. We're gonna try to get it any way we can. We also have some committees that need people to participate, so join in, we'll make it better.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you again for everybody that joined us tonight. Jackie, Chief who got a waist, Godfrey, excuse me, some tack one on your way out. And Jerry along with the council here. I thank everybody for coming out, we are up in the air, we're gonna aim for another one before, before the new year, or it could be right after the new year, but we will get the word out there as we know better, and continue doing these, whether it's one person or three thousand people that come to join us, our goal is to hear what the city has to say so we can continue and work for you. Thank you, everybody, check out those park benches, and have a fantastic evening. Thank you.